This meeting to order.
This conference will now be recorded.
I'm gonna call this meeting, I'm gonna call this meeting to order and gonna start off with a roll call so we can figure out who we have on. Please, when I call your names, say present or here or something. Elaine?
Yes.
Edith? Edith?
Here.
Becky? Barb?
Here.
Dave?
Here.
Uh, Rob? Cynthia? Annette?
Here.
Helga?
Here.
Kim?
Here.
Okay, that's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Okay. Um, let me look. Uh, we'll start with the minutes from the April 2nd regular meeting. Do we have any questions on those minutes? If not, can I get a motion to approve them?
I saw more, Elaine.
Okay. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
I'm sorry, who? Who was that?
I couldn't find it.
Okay. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Uh, the motion is carried. Uh, the second one is the special meeting we had on May 28th. Um, do we have any questions on those minutes? If there's no questions, can I get a motion to approve?
So moved, Dave.
Okay, second?
Elaine.
Okay. All, all, um, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Um, we'll go past public expression and now we have the treasures report. This might be a good time, well, you have this later on, right, about Abby, about the, um, operating budget?
I've got it right in there. Um, if you guys...
Yes, you do.
Yeah, the part that's highlighted yellow, um, our operations budget funds remaining is extremely low.
Yeah, $69.
Yeah. Um, that's because we had, all of our big bills are in the beginning of the year, um, you know, 2004 inspections and other...
Fire alarm.
Yeah, for the fire alarm account and for inspections and all that. So that hit us pretty hard and then because we've been closed for the past three months, um, we're not taking in any fine or printing or request revenue. So, um, that's, that's hitting us pretty hard. Uh, so I talked to Central about it and they said, um, to pay anything that we would pay out of operations, out of our private funds for now. And then, um, once the balance has gone back up, then we can, uh, transfer the funds back into our discretionary.
Do we expect any more big ones?
Nothing huge, but, um, I know we've, we've got a water bill coming up. I don't know if it's maybe ended due...
Yeah, but that shouldn't be more than a hundred dollars. I mean, you, you had a water bill in, in, um, in March.
Yeah.
For thirty-six and that was probably partial? Or was that a whole period?
That's a whole period.
Oh, okay, so that's not too bad.
Yeah, and I, I don't really anticipate anything else, um, you know, I...
I have a stupid question.
Yeah.
It's a stupid, it's a stupid minute question, but the $12 for the ACT workshop, I thought that was, we canceled that.
Um, the, it wasn't canceled. I don't know that it was cashed. Um, it was a bill and they're like, oh, we're gonna reschedule it. So we haven't heard back from the system if they're gonna send us back that money or if they're just gonna put it...
Just curious.
Yep.
Okay.
Any other questions about any of the financial stuff?
Can I get a, if there's no other questions, can I get a motion to approve the, um, financial report?
Who will make a motion to approve the financial report?
Helga? And can I get a second?
Second.
Rob? Okay, one, two. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Okay, now we'll move on to the executive report.
Okay, on to the continuing saga of COVID-19 in our libraries. So if you've been following the updates from the system, Erie County is gonna be facing a huge revenue shortfall this year and probably for 2021 as well. Um, Holly and I attended a very large virtual meeting, uh, with the library system and all the directors and library board presidents where the system updated us about what was going on with New York on Pause reopening and potential budget impacts. We expect cuts to library funding, uh, next year, but don't entirely know how they will affect us. We're currently making plans for many eventualities. Uh, Central is asking us to try to reduce our staffing budgets as much as we can this year to roll those funds into offsetting next year's possible budget cuts. Uh, the county that doesn't affect us is asking all departments to make a 13% cut to their budgets and the library system is asking the contracting member libraries to try to make a similar reduction. Uh, without federal assistance, the budget impact for 2021 could be as much as 25%, which could be devastating to our library.
Oh, my word.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're hoping that it doesn't come to that. But, um, really, a lot of it depends on federal funding coming through and then hitting it to our libraries.
So stay tuned, is the point.
Yeah. Cross your fingers, you know, write your letters to the, uh, state senators, uh, 'cause we don't have a state, or we don't have a, an legislator for our district yet, so, um, yeah, it's, we're hoping for good news, but...
Considerably, you could write both of the candidates.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, right now, they're just suggesting that we contact Senator Schumer and Senator Gillibrand. Um, that's just where the, uh, the, I'm blanking on the word. The advocacy is heading right now, so, you know, we're just hoping for that. Okay. Any other questions about that?
Nope.
Okay. So programs, uh, we've, we've been scrambling to change our entire service model virtually overnight. Our programs are broken down into two types, virtual programs that involve individual participants and usually a sign up, so like the YARPG and the YA Writing Club. And then, um, videos posted to Facebook and YouTube and we're measuring the number of views for those, so like Jason's quarantine cook videos and Ashley's craft videos. And, um, it looks like this is gonna be the basis for our programming model in the foreseeable future. Um, we don't know when we're gonna actually be able to have in-person programs in the library and, um, when you think into a, into account children's programs, that adds an entire other layer that, uh, we have to worry about. Um, so, uh, one additional, it's an unofficial outreach because technically it's, it's just unofficial, we'll call it. Um, so this program wasn't listed with the other statistics, but I was bringing DVDs that were donated to the library to the temporary food pantry at our partner Farm &amp; Peace over, um, on 62 and I included with DVDs, no...
Thirty-nine.
Oh, thirty-nine, sorry. Correct, sorry. Um, I included a, a note that they could return the DVDs to the library and some information about our services online and that we had free Wi-Fi. Um, and I got a nice thank you note from somebody who dropped some back off after they enjoyed them. And that was just, just a little way to try to brighten some people's day.
That place is closed, though, right?
Yeah, they closed down first, so they could...
There's a sign on there, closed June 1st.
Yeah.
Today. Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
The food pantry is closed June 1st, it says.
Right, yeah.
Up in Collins Center, Farm &amp; Peace, yeah.
Yeah.
It's closed, yeah.
Yeah.
My understanding is they closed that aspect of it and there were food donations too because they want to open their own business.
Oh, do they? Yeah. There on the same site?
Their farm's not growing anything yet, so it's kinda hard to get...
Well, it's a little early, yeah, I know.
Yeah.
Don't they sell everything?
Over time.
Yeah. But there was a sign today when I went by, June 1st, it said it was closed.
Yes. Yeah. Um, yeah, so in seven, or in April, we had seven virtual programs, it was 37 attendees. We had, uh, 14 videos posted with 3,866 views.
That was good.
Yeah, that was so good. We're happy that we're reaching a lot of people.
Right.
I forgot to write down the numbers for May. Edith, do you have them written in?
I'm not sure I don't, wait a minute.
I have that email, but they're not on that email, Abby.
Oh, I thought I had that.
You have the circulation number, the patrons' number and the Wi-Fi logins, but not the program?
Right, right. I didn't get any for May either.
Okay, I've got that, just...
And I went through the email just now.
I've got that on my computer. Um, let's see, for May, we had nine of the nine programs with 52 attendees. And, um, we had 20 videos with, uh, 3,463 views.
Wow.
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 It is. People are really looking for stuff.
Who needs a building?
But we love our building, Holly.
Yes, we do.
Holly, yes, please.
And we can see that people are still showing up to our building, um, from the Wi-Fi use. In April, there was 101 logins and in May, Holly, you said you had, is it 54?
Fifty-six.
Fifty-six logins. Um, yeah, so that's going pretty well, too.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah. Um, and then, so, any questions about programming or Wi-Fi use? Okay.
You have two more numbers, Abby, um...
That's the next question. Yeah.
The circulation?
Maybe, they're trying to say something.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, sorry, um, I couldn't get my mute button fast enough here. Um, the, or unmute myself, I should say. The Wi-Fi, is that, I guess I don't understand, is that, that we actually, they come to our parking lot and use the Wi-Fi, is that what they do?
Yep, basically, they, you know, they could come to the building, um, you know, we, we have signs posted both on the LED and at the front door saying, you know, social distancing is, uh, is enforced and stay six feet apart. We, we haven't seen any problems with it when we've been looking outside, but we see people out there in the parking lot pretty often.
Wow, cool.
Cool.
Alright. Thanks.
Sure, it's just like, they do the same thing at the high school.
Yeah, yeah. There's a hotspot in the high school parking lot where you can go and tune into their Wi-Fi.
Really?
I'm glad we do that.
Yeah.
When, when I watch the board meetings, they, um...
Oh, is that where you go, Holly? You told me, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Interesting. Nobody knows about this stuff.
Right, you don't know unless somebody tells you and it, it doesn't seem to be out there in general.
You're right, yeah. It's not written down someplace.
Yeah, we, we try to spread the word, um, especially for the library because it shows that we're providing a service to the community, so we want lots of people to come. Um, we've been putting it on Facebook, but usually the people who are on Facebook already have at least some internet.
Right.
And we put it on our sign on 39, on Row 39?
Yeah, that's got all of our login information, too, so...
Great.
Good.
Yeah, um, so, starting June 1st, we began curbside pickup. Um, we decided this date on the meeting of 5:28 and a number of other libraries in the system did, uh, chose to open that day as well. So as of Wednesday, so it was, uh, two days worth, I forgot to write down the numbers. Holly, could you tell me?
Twenty. Twenty, twenty patrons and circulated 65 items.
Oh, good.
That's a lot. That's great.
That's great. I'm, I'm impressed.
Yeah.
Well, I still count those as very slow days. Um, so we opened at 3:00 today and by the time I left at 4:00, we were just filling up spots left and right. Today was probably, was definitely the most busy.
Oh, good.
I would say it's, I don't have these numbers in front of me because we're still open till 7:00 tonight. Um, but it's, it was shaping up to be probably more than both those days put together, so we're really excited.
That's fantastic. Word of mouth. That's advertising, word of mouth.
It's nice to know.
It's listed in the paper. It's listed in the Buffalo News.
Oh, really?
Yes, the libraries that have that service, yes, it is. It was in today. I told the different one, Orchard Park and you and some other small ones, Eden, yeah.
Yeah.
It was in the, it was in the paper.
Wonderful.
So people do know about it.
Yeah, sometimes I think it's just, you know, getting people to realize, oh, yeah, and then they have to call to, you know...
Well, and to realize how it's done and so forth, yes, you're right. Yeah.
Um, so we wanna continue that again next week and, um, uh, the hours for next week are gonna be expanded slightly. We're gonna do Monday, 3:00 PM to 7:00 PM, Tuesday, 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM, Thursday, 3:00 PM to 7:00 PM, Friday, 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM.
I'm sorry, Abby, could you start over?
Yeah, I know.
A little slower. Monday, what?
3:00 PM to 7:00 PM.
Okay, Tuesday?
10:00 AM to 3:00 PM.
Okay.
Wednesday, closed.
Right, okay.
Thursday, 3:00 PM to 7:00 PM. Friday, 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM. And Saturday, 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM.
Oh, wow.
Um, so those will still be the, the walk-up curbside services where people call and we get the items for them.
Yeah.
We, we still don't quite feel comfortable enough to open up the buildings. Some libraries are opening up their buildings next week, but...
But we're, we're small.
We are small, um, but I'm still waiting on things, uh, the system is supposed to provide, uh, things for our keyboards that'll make them a lot easier to clean and I, I really want those before we open up to have computers for the public.
Yeah.
And I wanna, you know, make sure that the library is as empty as it can be so that people aren't really congregating and there's enough room to move around.
To move around, yeah, that's the hard part.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Abby, once the library is open to the public, will you still be doing curbside or will you stop the curbside once the building's open?
Um, I hope to still be doing curbside, um, depending on just the demands on our time because I know people, they might not feel comfortable in entering the building.
Exactly.
And we understand that, so as long as we have the staffing to do it, um...
Yeah.
I hope to keep it going. You know, it's, it's not even a bad service to offer just year-round, you know? I don't think it should be a, a limiting thing if we can get people...
It's kind of a continuation of services, exactly.
Exactly.
It is, yeah.
People don't have enough time and, you know...
There's a lot of older people or people with immune system that are compromised that could use that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, you got a kid sick at home and you, you can just dash out to the library, just give me 10 Paw Patrol DVDs and, you know, get amused.
Exactly, yeah.
Abby, how are you staffing curbside?
Um, right now, we're having two people in the building. Uh, we come in half an hour before and we stay half an hour after. That lets us get prepped and cleaned up. Um, uh, on Monday and today, we had three people just because, uh, I had to get out at certain times, obviously I had to get out for this meeting and, um, on Monday, I needed to be home in the evening as well, um, so I had an extra person in to cover those.
So you always have minimum two?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
We are still at 50% of our, of our workforce, so we can only have up to, what is it? Four people, five people in the building at a time? So, that is, you know, I, it's not really a limiting factor, usually we don't have more than three people working at a time regularly.
Yeah.
Um, so yeah, that's, that's where we're at for staffing. Okay.
That's, you're, you're doing a good job with that, that's good.
Thank you, I'm, I'm trying and it's just...
No, honey, I mean, it's all new. It's all new, yeah.
It's all new and look at the numbers you're getting out of it. I mean, it's really fabulous.
Yeah. I'm happy.
Well, there's a need, seems like, doesn't there?
Apparently, yeah.
Yeah.
Good to find it.
Yeah.
Okay. Library of Things?
So we couldn't get out the new Library of Things, um, before the shutdown. We were in the process of getting them in the library and, um, processing them, so that's been put on hold indefinitely. Um, there may be restrictions on loaning these items, so we're looking to go through material handling.
They got contamination.
Right.
It could have.
We're, we're setting them aside for at least 72 hours, you know, from when they're returned to when we're handling them. Um, but we just, we wanna be extra careful, especially with the Library of Things.
You have to, yes.
Yeah. Okay.
Oh, well.
Okay, so staffing, um, Judith Andulzik resigned her senior page position on April 24th. Right now, we're not looking to fill this position until we have a better idea of what the library will be offering upon reopening. Um, I do have someone who is able to cover all the hours, so at least we have that, everything's covered for that. Um...
Abby, how long did Judy work for us?
Oh, gosh, um, nine or 10 years, I don't, I don't have the numbers on my mind.
Do we send her a letter of appreciation or should we from the board, I think, just maybe she's been there for a year? I knew she'd been there for a long time, I just didn't know how long.
I think she's been there probably 10 years because she and I work there together.
Okay, I just, just wondering, you know, maybe a letter would be appropriate on behalf of the board thanking her for...
Yeah.
I'll do it.
Service and she's free to use the library anytime, she can give her a lifetime membership.
We all have that, Rob, but that's alright.
That's somebody who's paying attention.
But it's a good, it's a good, it's a good idea, yes.
Yeah. Um, you know, generally when someone leaves, especially when they've been there a long time, we try to have a, a small, you know...
I know, get together.
Yeah, so we weren't able to do that pretty, I'm, I'd still, you know, we hope to do it, uh, when we can, uh, it's just on hold for now.
It's like all the funerals, come on, guys, it's the same thing. Yeah, in the future.
Yep, yep. Uh, during the first few weeks, when all the staff was being paid under the emergency order, um, I asked for all the staff members to try to contribute things to post on the library's online presence. Um, then after that emergency pay order ended, uh, the staff who has been working has been, myself, my regular hours, uh, developing plans and procedures, taking online trainings, updating social media and attending meetings with the system, fellow directors and staff. Um, Jason has been working his regular hours, running online YA programs, attending online trainings and keeping up with library social media. Uh, Jim, the caretaker, has been working his usual hours to maintain the building and grounds. Bethany, the cleaner, is maintaining the building's cleanliness after she did a big deep clean of the library. Um, and Ashley, our clerk typist, uh, was being assigned one day of work from home for each week to develop online programs and to do some online training and develop programs for when the library reopens. Um, she does most of our children's programs and she's been doing a lot of the kids crafts that we've been featuring on Facebook. They've been really, really good.
My kids love them.
Yeah. Yeah, we, we've got something else in the works where, um, we haven't started it yet, but we plan to offer like a take, a make and take craft. So you, you, when you call up for your hold, you know, you can ask for some crafts and, um, we'll pack them up with your books and they go out with you. And, um, yeah, I'd really like Ashley to do the video of how to make it. Um, with our Facebook, so in case they need a little bit of help or ideas on how to put it together. So that's in the works, hopefully for next week. Very cool.
Nice.
Yeah. Um, yeah, so that's, uh, that's where we are with staffing. Slowly, I'm gonna be bringing more people back on. Um, Jason, uh, his babies are due on Saturday.
Ooh.
So he will be gone as of Saturday for a, a week or two.
Abby, are they due or the, I mean, are they scheduled?
They're scheduled.
Okay.
It's a C-section, scheduled C-section and all that. Um, so, you know, I, I keep asking him, I'm like, you're not gonna leave me today, are you? I have some people, you know, just waiting, just in case, um, I have staff members, you know, for the emergency on-call list. Um, but, you know, he's like, no, 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 she's, we're, she's gonna hold out for the weekend and we'll see how it goes from there, but everybody's excited and we're all looking forward to new members of our little library family.
That's good.
Lot of boys.
A lot of boys. And they're both good boys, too. Um, at the last measurement, Maria had 15 pounds of baby in there.
Oh, boy. Twins are supposed to be little.
Yeah, that's what we're hoping.
Oh, my.
So...
Not all baby.
So, yeah, so we're just waiting on that. Uh, and we'll go from there, okay. Uh, and all, all of our major building maintenance is on hold, the LED project, um, all the door replacements, just because we don't know about funding right now. Uh, I talked to Ken, no, Ken Stone about the LED project and he's like, no, that's just completely on hold until we figure out all the funding. Um, so right now, we're just in like any sort of emergency ma, maintenance, which we don't have any right now, luckily.
Well, Abby, isn't, weren't we paying for the door replacement repairs and things out of our own funds?
We were, but, um...
Before that, I got $250,000, the last I looked at our recap of our accounts, I, I think we can cover it. I don't wanna be putting it off and all of a sudden it's fall, I, I just, you know, depending on where Randy's schedule is, I, I would think we would, you know, tell him to move forward whenever he's ready to move forward, I, I don't see where there's a financial issue there.
Well, we couldn't have people in the building for a while, um...
I understand all of that stuff, but as, as it moves forward, as the phases and so on and so forth, and as long as Randy and his crews are able to work within those parameters and so on, uh, and trying to avoid contact and only be there days and times that we don't have people there, then I, you know, I, I think we should encourage him to do that.
Okay, I'll have Jim reach back out to him.
I'm just one person, one boy, I, I, I just, my, all of a sudden, then we, we get in the, before you know it, it'll be fall and we still have none and everybody else, you know, a lot of the customers do stuff, so...
It's still leaking, right?
Roof?
No, the roof is...
The door. Talk about the door.
The door, it's getting rusty and, um, they need to be weathers, they need like the weatherproof stuff on, um, yeah, they just need to be improved.
Yeah, we're nowhere with the roof.
Yeah, no. Okay.
A door, a door we can handle.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I, I agree with that, with that, Rob. Let's do it now, or I mean, before fall, anyway.
I mean, again, he has to fit it into his schedule and, you know, we want him to fit into the ours and avoid people, all that stuff, and it has to fit into the governor's schedule. If we have a rebound with everything else, who knows what's gonna happen? all that stuff, and it has to fit into the governor's schedule. If we have a rebound with everything else, who knows what's gonna happen. We just, we should let him know that already when he is, we have the funds available, and let's go.
Who is he that's gonna fix it?
You gotta continue the maintenance. Yes, you do.
Yeah, um, Randy Wing.
Pardon?
Randy Wing.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. That's the guy that looked at it, wasn't it? Randy?
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so that's the end of my executive report.
Move it.
Okay, Rob moves it. Can I get a second?
I'll a second, Elaine.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Unfinished business. I think we need a drum roll on this.
Was that good enough, Holly?
Yeah, that was excellent.
The good news has paid off. The bad news is there are a number of us on this board that were there when we when we started the debt.
Yeah, yeah.
We were there a long time, Rob.
Yeah, we have, we were, have been.
Yes, we have. New business, or where are we?
Yeah, we're we're up to new business. So Abby, do you want me to start with the, I don't know whether you, did you get a chance to watch that?
I did, yes.
Yeah, me too. Did you get a chance, Rob, or no?
No, I've been shoveling mulch. I got a mulch net.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You've been shoveling snow? Where you been?
I just walked in the door two minutes before the meeting.
He's doing his lawn. What are you talking about? Hey, Robbie?
I will watch it. I, it's on my, it's on my agenda.
We just have to give you our time.
So the the uh, the bottom line, you guys, is that last time we met on the special meeting, we we approved our safety plan. Um, subsequent, subsequent to that, there was a um, a meeting, uh, um, a Zoom Zoom meeting uh, with that, uh, the topic was legal considerations for our library board when reopening your library. Um, Abby and I had tried to get into it. We got locked out. They sent, they sent us a recording of it, and essentially, but the, what I took away mostly from this meeting was the following. The, it says, just a reminder, per per the New York education law, your board, that would be us, is an independent, responsible entity that governs the library. No municipality can substitute an instruction to operate for the board's determination. No matter what, the trustees or the fiduciaries responsible for the library, not the town or other entity associated with the library. And and all that really means is, from a legal standpoint, it's on us. It's not on the, it's not on Central, it's not on on Abby and her staff, it's on the board. So reopening and maintaining the the uh, safety plan and having all our ducks in the bowl for reopening. So, yes, we have a fabulous, we have a wonderful safety plan, but um, uh, we have to assess it at least every two weeks. So we are going to, we are going to need to have a, pardon the expression, committee. Um, because it's supposed to be fluid. The safety plan is supposed to be fluid. And and the curbside pickup isn't going to expose new things nearly as much as site reopening is, right? So as Abby comes upon things that she would say, hey, I mean, there's a change to the safety plan, Abby, that you just sent through already, right?
Yeah.
You just sent that on the email today. So as the safety plan changes, it is upon us, the board, to assess those changes and update the safety plan. So um, I've already reeled in Rob, so he's he's willing to be on this committee, and I need at least one, if not two, more people.
I'll do it.
Thank you, Edith. Anybody? Anybody else?
I will, Holly.
I couldn't hear that. Is that Barb?
Yes.
I think it was Barb.
It was.
Barb?
Yes. Okay, Barb, you're raising your hand, right? Okay, okay. All right, so, um, all right, so it's Holly and and Abby, of course, will be there as as our executor of the plan. Um, Abby, Holly, Rob, Edith, and Barb. Um, and that will keep us out of the business of having to have an emergency meeting every time.
That's true.
Yeah.
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 Do you want to motion or effect, Madam President?
Uh, we actually have, we actually have a resolution.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Um, it's not, it's uh, the resolution is hot off the press. You probably, you don't have it in your packet, but Edith has it.
Yep.
You want, um, do we have more questions about this? It was a very informative, um, webinar, whatever you wanna call it, I thought. Um.
Holly, is this resolution, before Edith reads it, maybe she reads it, I'll answer my question, but I'm basically an impatient person. Um, will will this resolution authorize the committee to make the changes on behalf of the board? Or is, or so, I I don't know how that is, but, okay. That's fine. That's how we stay late on our, light on our feet and move quickly and address.
Yes.
But I just.
Sounds good, yeah.
If the, if that is the case, I just wanna make sure the rest of the board is aware of it and comfortable with that.
We're comfortable. That's wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, Elaine. We're hanging ourselves, but that's.
I know. I don't care. Maybe it's a lot easier, Rob. Come on.
Oh, I agree. That's, I just wanna make sure everybody was aware of it.
Well, we trust these people. You know, they're all right, right?
I don't know about Rob.
Yeah, I think so.
What about Dave? You trust him, Dave?
No, that's what I said.
Yeah, they they done it.
He can't have me.
Yeah. This is something, this is something new. Any of us, none of us are used to this, so let's just follow the flow.
There's a, there's another, there's another um, point that came out in that webinar, Abby. I'm, I don't know if you, if it struck you the way it struck me, but um, we are, the board is allowed to make temporary policy changes?
Yes.
Right, so if, if, but it doesn't sound like we're required to, because we would have a lot of policies that might be subject to temporary change, like code of conduct policy to say that everybody has to wear a face mask, um, um, policies within the meeting room policy. You know, there's probably a lot of them that we could change, but I didn't realize that we were officially allowed to temporarily change them, but it doesn't save us any process steps, though. It's still, they're still saying, I looked up the, what they were calling the form. They said, oh, you can temporarily do it, and and there's a template on this website, so I went to that website, Abby, and it's a resolution.
Yeah.
So we.
It would save us, like, if we had it written, if we had the poli- the temporary policy written, um, and we, you know, had it set to expire on a certain date so that we could either um, extend it or just let it expire. So it would save us one step there.
One step, yeah.
Some sunshine provision, sure. Makes sense.
Yeah.
Holly, I have a a suggestion. I don't know whether this is the appropriate place to bring it up or not. Uh, and it's uh, not really a change in policy, but again, a suggestion. On page three of the reopening safety plan, it said staff would be instructed not share such items as pens, pencils, utensils, and so forth, whenever practical, and so forth. Uh, how about a cleaner nearby or some wipes, uh, like the Lysol wipes that could be used to give them a quick swipe?
To the pen?
Pardon?
To the pan?
The, yeah, wipe the pan or whatever.
I read that.
What we have in place, um, we do have alcohol, uh, well, rubbing alcohol, cleanser, hydrogen peroxide, those are all right at the desk, so we can wipe down anything. Um, we're kind of just issuing everybody their own set of pens and pencils um, to keep with them so that we don't have to keep wiping those down. Um.
They get to keep them.
Right, yeah, it's something that they put them in their cubby at the end of the night, um, so that way they're always there for them. They just grab them out and they can keep them with them. Uh, you know, and that is their set of utensils. But um, then like occasionally, something will happen and somebody will have to jump onto a phone or computer that somebody else was working on. So you just, you you try to wipe it down in between. You sanitize your hands um, before and after, and then as soon as you can, you go wash your hands and wipe down the entire area that the other person was working in. So we have that under control.
Dave, Dave, you're talking about a patron signing?
No, it it just says, uh, actually, it says staff. Uh.
I've been in doctor's offices where I had to sign my name, and they wiped that off right away.
Yeah.
Yeah, if a page.
The pen that you signed, yeah.
We would just, you know, it would be wiped before and probably wipe it after, just so that, you know.
Bring your own pen. That's what you really should do, but, you know, other than that, I know.
Well, as Abby has suggested, they'll have their own set.
Yeah, but just to make sure that's wiped off, yeah.
Yep.
I think they've thought of every, they've thought of most of everything that they need to.
We've been trying.
Well, I know, but there's always something coming out, you know, that's not.
Well, that's, that's why they want us to assess it every two weeks.
Yeah, exactly.
Right. I have one more, one more uh, um, thing I wanted to talk with you, Abby, on the um, idea of temporarily changing the policies. The reason they're advocating for that, it seemed to me, was that it gets us out of having to defend our position when, in fact, somebody doesn't wanna wear a mask or somebody gives us flack about not being able to use meeting room, it gives us the ability to say it's our policy.
Yeah.
That's the advantage, right? So I don't know, maybe, maybe we'll, I'll I'll continue to think about it and um, you know, maybe we'll, we'll figure out if we should go forward with that.
I think we definitely should before we open to the public, because I wanna have that.
We wanna have our, yeah, I think it's much, it's safer that way. I think from a litigation point of view, it's safer.
Yeah.
Um, and it, and it basically means.
Put in a position of, we don't want our staff put in a position either. If you don't wear a mask, you'll come in the building, period. And and that's, that's the policy.
We could put signage up there, and that would protect the staff, Rob, but it doesn't protect the the board, should I say?
I understand.
Because, because it's on the board to have the policy, and if we don't have the policy changed.
I agree. That's what I'm saying. I'm agreeing with you a hundred percent, and but I, it's, I also want to protect the staff from having to make the, make the, the decision.
They don't have to make the judgment call. That's right.
She can make a judgment call, yes.
So I think.
Cause there's gonna be situations that are coming up. You never know what's gonna happen, right?
But I think what it's gonna take is is a a quick review of all the policies to see which ones are applicable for change.
Right.
Because there's probably ones we're not even thinking of. The two that they use.
I know, that's what happened.
In the webinar was um, uh, wearing a mask and the use of the meeting room, but.
Yeah.
There could be more.
We also need some provision for people who don't want to follow the policy. You say our policy is to wear a mask, and they say, I ain't gonna do it.
Well, then, too bad. You can't come in.
Yeah, but we also don't want somebody in the position of physical de- uh, danger. Yes. You know, we've all seen, all seen the pictures of the guy that was assaulted in in, what was it, Florida? Because he didn't wanna let him in.
Please, but that's my point. Uh, what happens when somebody belligerently refuses to follow policy?
Well, Cuomo says you can't go into a star. The guy says you gotta have a mask. How, isn't that almost the same thing as this?
Yes, of course, but what, we're not gonna say to Abby, you gotta stand in front of this dude and say no.
I know. I know. The guy might have a gun or a knife. I know. I know.
No, you might have in your, what you're going to do, which would maybe be to call the police.
Yeah, but you're gonna, yeah.
Are you gonna let the guy just do what he wants to do? I highly agree. We don't want any injury to any of our staff.
Exactly.
We better know what we're, who, if we get somebody like that.
That's not my trouble.
No.
Try not to buy trouble. People that go to libraries are nice, law-abiding citizens, right?
Bob has a question?
It's not a question looking trouble. It's a question.
Camera, do we not? I mean, we, maybe we make to the point where whoever's staffing the desk, we may have to install a buzzer entry system. I mean, if they don't have a, that doesn't mean they can't take one off and they come inside, but that, if they're not.
Lock the door. Lock the door. I don't know. Yeah. Almost, yeah.
Then maybe some overkill, or maybe overthinking this, but then maybe something we can.
I know.
Investigate is is a, is a possibility.
Well, here, here's another thing, you guys. One of the reasons we're not rushing to reopen the site.
It's got so many problems. I know.
Problems, and if, and we can wait and see how the other Buffalo libraries are getting along.
You're, you're right, Holly.
You know?
That's right.
So I know that they're gonna open before we will, and we can take their experience and their best practices. That's what I'm hoping.
This is all new to the whole society. Come on, guys, I know.
Yes, but they will be ahead of us, though, Elaine, right?
Yeah, that's right. Uh, you're right. You're right. I know.
They're gonna, they're gonna reopen on Monday.
Well, and they probably have more people coming in. Yeah, I don't know. And you know, people out here are kinda law-abiding, you know, they, they are.
They are.
They are. Come on. We have prisons, but they're locked up, guys, they're.
Yeah, well.
Well, whatever, I know.
Never, never go last.
You gotta have one guy that's gonna create a problem, and that's the.
It's just that the staff needs guidance on on how to handle it. They should not have to be making any decisions.
I know, and we're not, and they're not uh, corrections officers or security. I know. It's hard. Yeah, I know. We gotta look at all the different points. You're right. Other than that, life goes on, right, guys?
Yeah. So with that, do we want to, um, I'd like to get a a motion to approve the resolution for the.
I need one change to it.
Okay.
That, that's what I emailed you about. So um, in the safety plan, the COVID-nineteen reopening safety plan, um, in section two, part C, letter E, on page five, um, it's Central Library and Buffalo Branches, and that should just state Town of Collins Public Library.
We don't have that, right?
That was sent out um, with the packet for this meeting.
Okay, it's in my envelope someplace. That's all right.
Yeah. It's a minor fix. It's just, I forgot to cover. And um, I'd like to think about uh, something to be added to it once we do start the reopening to people. Um, if, uh, one of the things that we, they talked about in the webinar was if a person asserts harm based on library action, um, how the staff will assess that. Um, that's something we don't have to worry about today, but our committee will probably be looking at it for uh, the next iteration.
Yeah, okay. Uh, Edith, can you read the resolution, please?
Yes, um, I will skip the boilerplate, resolution adopted by and I hereby certify and go to the meat of it. Resolved that the library operated under its plan of service in accordance with the provisions of education.
No, no.
The one from the email.
Oh, the one from the email, okay. Sorry. Whoa. Oh, I just lost my page. Darn.
Do you want me to read it, Edith? I have it here. You got it? Okay.
Whereas the library may only proceed with the resumption of certain operations with a written safety plan, and whereas the written safety plan, under consideration by the board, has been informed by the latest requirements of the Center for Disease Control and the Occupational Safety and Health Administration, and whereas board, the board resolves that the safety plan shall be updated once every two weeks by a special committee consisting of uh, Rob, Barb, Edith, and Holly. Be it resolved that the board hereby adopts the safety plan called Town of Collins Public Library COVID-nineteen Reopening Safety Plan Version One as of today's date, and that such safety plan shall be revised as needed, no less than every two weeks.
Can I get a motion to approve?
I saw move, Elaine.
Oh.
Dave.
And Dave, second, right? Okay, I I'm gonna have to do a vote. Okay, I, I'm going to have to do a roll call vote on this.
Yep.
Uh, Elaine?
Yes.
Edith?
Yes.
Barb?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Rob?
Aye.
Annette?
Aye.
Helga? Did we get Helga?
Yes.
Okay, Kim?
Yes.
And I vote aye. Um, the resolution is carried. Sorry. So, a lot of paper here.
Holly, are you going to be calling the virtual or setting, are we going to ask Abby to set up the virtual meeting every two weeks kind of thing? Then, because we need her input as to what might need to be changed as based on her experience. Can we have her do that?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, she's got a, yeah, she's got to find a, since we're still using GoTo, oh, you know what, Abby? Did you hear in, I think it was in that webinar, um, somewhere I heard that, you know, we still have approval to use, approval for virtual board meetings, but it's going to expire.
Yes, it, it supposedly expires on the ninth. Um, who knows? Everybody keeps hoping that it'll be extended.
Okay, yeah, okay. But these are, these are, this is, these unofficial board meetings, though, they're committee meetings.
Right.
So, we could have a virtual meeting regardless, right?
I would have to double check on that, but I think so.
But they're not, they're not public and, you know, we could have a, you know, it's just a committee meeting, so.
Right.
But they still would be subject to the open meetings law, I agree with what you're saying.
No, I don't think so.
Because we're making policy decisions, I think they would have to be.
I don't know.
I'll get clarification.
As long as, you're saying, Abby, that the, the central is aware of the issue and they have to fix. And once they fix, then it's not an issue, so let's count on central to fix. And if you call in to share.
You've got a lot of faith, Rob.
And reinforce the, you know, the problems that were foreseen and, and what we set up that we need to do, they need to fix.
Yeah, right.
And we'll add fuel to the fire, I guess, hold their, hold their feet to the fire, anyway.
Yeah, I, I would, I'm, you know.
Well, that's their responsibility.
We just got to make sure they.
Their responsibility is stand by us, yes. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, we, the next resolution is to approve the bylaws.
Are we still voting?
Yeah, we have some more resolutions to get through.
Oh, my God.
Skip the resolutions.
Edith, here it is.
And the I hereby certify, resolve that the library operated under its plan of service in accordance with the provisions of education law and the regulations of the commissioner. And be it further resolved that the library attest that the financial information provided to the Buffalo and Erie County Public Library and New York State as part of any and all reporting is true and complete. And be it further resolved that the bylaws of the Board of Trustees of the Town of Collins Public Library were reviewed by the Board of Trustees and adopts the proposed change, changes.
Move it.
No, we got to have a roll call vote. Oh, yeah. Can I?
All this work.
Can I have a motion to accept, can I have a motion to accept the resolution?
Yeah, Robbie made it.
Yeah, second? Barb, second? Second?
Elaine? I'll second it. Robbie, we've been here the longest.
Yeah, and I get the greater.
Roll call vote.
I don't have any, Rob.
Okay, we're having a roll call vote, Elaine?
Yes.
Edith?
Yes.
Barb?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Rob?
Aye.
Annette?
Aye.
Helga?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
And I, and I vote aye. The resolution is carrying. Okay, that's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine.
I don't know.
That's what I get. Uh, and now we have a new policy resolution.
Oh, my God.
Easy, girl.
Not long. Skipping resolution and I hereby certify, start with whereas's. Whereas the Town of Collins Public Library is part of the BECPL Adopted Organizational Competencies. The library has a process to establish new and to review standing policies to ensure that they remain timely and effective. And whereas the policy commission, committee uses this process to review and make recommendations which are reflected in the attached drafts of the return voucher. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Town of Collins Public Library adopts the proposed return voucher as written.
Can I get a motion?
So, move, Dave.
Second?
Helga.
Helga. Okay, roll call, Elaine?
Yes.
Edith?
Yes.
Barb?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Rob?
Aye.
Annette?
Aye.
Helga?
Aye.
Kim?
Yes.
And I vote aye. Uh, resolution is passed. Conflict of interest forms.
Usually we do them at the June meeting, um, but I'm going to put them on hold until we meet again in person. Um, just let me know if there are any changes that you need to declare for conflicts of interest um, going forward until we can get those signed.
Abby, can we just, can you just include them in the next packet or whatever? And just, I mean, all we do is we have to sign it, we have to fill it out and sign it.
True, yeah.
We have to wait, really, can we just get it done and?
Have to return them.
Yeah, they got to.
Well, Robbie, you're involved with the Trump Towers, come on, you got to divulge that, Mark. I'm sorry, guys. That's the whole thing gets me going.
I know.
Other than that.
So silly.
I suppose we go with Abby's recommendation here, even if we do, but we still have to.
It's a good idea, Abby, just include it next time.
Okay.
Okay? Oh. My arm's getting tired, guys.
I'm up there.
I told you, Holly, remember?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
You need a speaker, you need a hands-free speakerphone.
Yeah, yeah, I do, but my, I got to hold my phone up here to my ear.
Yeah.
Robbie, can you imagine?
Put on a speakerphone.
It's been 20 years since we built this library.
I know, it's hard to believe.
I know, remember the Saturday mornings?
Yep.
With you know who, I'm not going to say anything, but, oh, my God.
Well, we, it's a wonderful asset in the community, so.
It was a lot of work, I'll tell you, guys.
It was.
Yeah. We weren't young chickens either, were we? You were, but I wasn't.
You were a younger chicken.
You were a young chicken, but I wasn't.
Yeah, I was, you know.
I know, but we worked all week and then we, Saturday mornings, we had meetings, guys.
Yeah, but look what you got out of it.
I know, but it was a lot, it was a lot of work, I'm telling you.
We have a community jewel that we can all be proud of.
Yeah, because you, you guys have never been down where the old meeting, remember the library? They, they, they should have been down where we were.
I have. Been there.
Yeah.
Fun memories of that old library.
Down in the town hall, yeah.
Yeah. Doing story hours in that little tiny room off the library.
Yeah.
Historical room and that's what you're doing.
Yeah. Good hearty breeze down there, yeah.
1957, when I was in your kindergarten, we always, and all the classes would walk over every day, every week.
Did they?
From the Collins Elementary, you know, the, where the painter center is now, we would walk over to Collins branch school and go to the library.
Yeah. I know, and that's what you thought a library looked like, didn't you?
That was 63 years ago, so that's kind of.
Oh, my words, Rob.
I'm going to Galaxy Fire Department.
Oh.
He's not that.
Hey, you guys, really want to know the bad side of things?
What?
To high school without a library, no library in our high school.
Yeah.
Or in our town.
Wow, oh, my goodness. When I was in high, when I was in high school, I, I got kicked out of honor society and forced to go before the school board because Carol Hewitt and Linda Gebhardt and myself cut class one day to go to the Buffalo Library.
Oh.
You were a rabble rouser even then, Holly. You were a rabble rouser even then.
Oh, man.
Wow.
Wow.
Real wild people, right?
So.
Okay, Holly.
Yeah. We have, uh, our next meeting is what, uh, August 6th? Um, except Abby's going to set up, you want to set up the, do you want to start? Do you want to start the biweekly meetings after the onsite opening? Or do you want to do two weeks from today or?
Uh, probably two days from today.
Okay, that's, that's good. All right.
Approximately.
All right.
But like this, right?
Yeah, and it would just be for the committee. Until we do decide to do the opening and then I think we need another meeting of the board. But that's another short 15-minute one.
It's all right.
I don't think we do, I don't think we do. I read, I read that today somewhere, but anyway. We'll, we'll check. We'll see. Okay.
Yeah, time will tell what happens, right?
Yeah.
As far as the epidemic, yeah, well, it depends on who you are, you know? Some of you young people are all right, but you know, us older are.
Hey.
Compromised. I know, but we're compromised, I am.
Yeah, well.
Have to be careful, yeah.
I don't have health issues, even though.
I do, well, I do. I do, but, you know, I have to watch.
I know you do.
So, Abby, you're saying the committee will meet two weeks from tonight?
Um, I need to double check on availability. I, I'll let you guys know as soon as I can.
Okay, approximately, approximately, Barb.
Right, thank you.
Okay, if nothing else, right? I have this meeting as a charm. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, everybody.
Holly, you done, you done good, Holly.
Oh, good.
Hey, Holly?
Yeah.
You still at the, uh, well, it's, it's not business related at all, it's a personal, the, uh, the Gaylord children and grandchildren have been peacefully demonstrating in three different cities, including DC and.